Yep, after reconvening. All right, we are going to reopen the public meeting at six oh eight PM on January twenty first. The performance review of City Administrator Sarah Brun was satisfactory and completed. We will now reconvene our open meeting and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Japan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, if we could possibly change the training to come after the discussion top guide, seven and eight, can we move seven down to eight and eight up to seven so I can go home and crash?
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to honor the request of swapping agenda items seven and eight to allow an ill council member to leave early.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we need to approve the agenda now as it has been redone or are we okay? Okay. Okay, so moving on to item number six, consider the approval of site plan for Foley Family Restaurant. And Dave Wilkin.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the Planning Commission did meet last Monday and they are recommending approval of the proposed sketches up there. It is just the construction of a small breezeway on front of the Foley Family Restaurant. It's on existing impervious, so there's, there's no significant change in drainage, no, no impact on parking because they're not adding any seating. This is strictly just a small breezeway to add on to the building and staff has no concerns and Planning Commission also approved it with no conditions. So we're just need a motion from the council to approve the site plan.
I move that we approve the site plan for Foley Family Restaurant.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna move on to new item number seven, which is the topics of discussions, goals and priorities for, again, review and discussion purposes. This is, I think stemming from our last meeting, understanding what more can we work towards and what priorities are out there for us to be able to discuss and when are the appropriate times for those discussions? And I will preface with the fact that some of these things may not be relevant for years to come. And I think that's for us to have those discussions now during this, during this session. Has every, has everyone seen the list? And I think a handful of you have also added to the list.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
I guess before we get started, I'd like to hear from Public Works and Police Department on what their vision is before we get into what our priorities are.
Sure, like other, other items that they feel might be relevant to add to the list?
And being citizens of Foley.
Sure. Yeah.
Not as a department head, but as a citizen. What, what is your vision? Mark?
Hopefully continue to grow. You know, we really need the tax base. Support our community, so. Find out some way to, you know, keep our rates in line, our taxes in line. We have to be able to, we know we need to spend, that part of growing. But you have to continue to expand items for the community.
Chief?
I'm taking those two.
Oh, oh.
That's your problem.
Okay.
I would do that if I was a pastor, maybe not if I was a pastor. Oh, it shouldn't have to be my chickens.
No, I would also agree with Mark on that, that the tax base we need to look at business and, because that brings in the bigger tax base, you have homes, because then they'll fill jobs of these businesses that we bring in. But I always think like, department wise, our staffing's gonna need to grow in the next year or two. Because our calls are getting there. But I always think having a young, you know, I have young kids, something that can, that we can attract people to come into town, so we're not just a bedroom community. I mean, the pool is a big attraction, I don't know if you can expand on that. I, I don't have the answers for it, I don't. But I just think if you bring attraction that is not in surrounding cities, that will bring people into town to go to like, say a bigger water park and then they will hit up your, you know, your block or your other small businesses to your coffee shops.
You know, I, a part of what we're doing, I, I feel with this list is, is understanding, you know, what, what stays, what goes, what's a priority. And then the, I think the ultimate goal is to then reach out to the constituents and, and bring some of these options to them, maybe it'll be through survey, maybe it'll be through, you know, Facebook comments, things of that nature, to understand what, what they're looking for, what some of these things are from a priority standpoint and what things we should focus on first. And so that's the ultimate goal here, is, you know, doing, doing more during our time here and understanding what the growth of the city looks like, where are we heading? What do we want, what don't we want? And how do we prioritize then and plan to get those things either in place or done, accomplished, et cetera? So. With that, I think, should we just start from the top? I think, you know, you know, the housing development we know is important. Housing in general, right, workforce housing, as Chief pointed out. You know, and to Mark's point, we need tax base. You know, I think one of the biggest, we'll say, comments, right, is, is taxes. And it's taxes everywhere. And one way to thwart that is by, in fact, growing. I think we can safely say the water, wastewater product is behind us at this point and now it's time for us to be able to, right, the moratorium is gone, what can we do to grow our city? Grow our tax base. It's a win-win for, for everybody. To Mark's point, it, it does cost a little money to make a little money, especially in the environment that we're in today. Southside, I, I know we still had our RFP out and we have, we'll call it, a proposal on the table that we've, that we've just kind of put on the back burner. I think we need to make a decision whether or not that's something we want to move forward with or is there opportunity for us to look at maybe another RFP? Now that we've gotten some of this ARPA dollar figured out, we're not on such a time crunch, we can give it some more time out in the market, we can do a, some more efforts in getting it to, you know, more developers or more organizations to help us spread the, spread the RFP. Comments on, I think we should start with south side housing?
Yeah, I, I've got that for number one. A project out there is, is hoping that we get some housing here to, to lower our taxes and to make the livable budget for our community. But with the two, Police Department and the Street Department, are we looking at any expansion? You know, we've gotten more equipment, right now we're, the, the housing, I think is pretty good for that. Are we looking for any expansion as far as you guys, buildings, Police Department, Street Department, that we're not gonna be surprised with within the next two, three years?
City facilities, yeah.
I would say that's one of the, one of the items, right? Is the city facilities planning, I think last year or early this year, we had discussed, you know,
Well, there's been talk, but nothing, nothing really.
What does that look like, you know, a Public Works building, right, and relocating to where the rest of their items are, right? Police Department, more space. We know that there's an item in the, in the budgets for this year for City Hall to be expanded by an office.
It's a simple remodel.
You know, an office.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking if there's something in the future that we should be seeing, a plan or, or a future plan as to what we might be looking at.
What was that called?
The, the facilities plan, so, is S E H, right, is the one who got the sample for us, I think. Yeah. So we provided that sample. Basically what that does is that would look at all of our departments. So City Hall, Public Works, Police, Fire, and really just a big snapshot of what, what are we gonna need or how does this look like to grow? I can't remember what the price was on that now, I'm just blanking on that, do you remember?
For some reason, like twenty or twenty-five was about.
I think that's what it, yeah.
And that, and that might have been why we tabled it, you know, obviously it's, wasn't a part of the budget. But I think as we talk about the, you know, the growth of the city, I think that has to be a part of the conversation sooner rather than later, otherwise we're putting, you know, the, the cart before the horse.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it, it would look at some of the different options, because I know we have some ideas on what we want in certain areas, but maybe some of them we're not quite exactly sure how it's gonna look. So I think that really gives you the opportunity to study that and, and make some planning decisions.
Right, it gives us opportunity to start budgeting, you know, two years, three years, seven years out and, and what those budgets look like in order to help accommodate with any of this, this growth that we need to understand is going to have to happen. You know, you know, staffing is one, is one element of it, we, we know that that kind of goes hand in hand, but the facilities is a big portion, I.
What, with the housing, I guess, we have to look at what are we willing to do? I mean, there's, we have a meeting, of course, with TIF meeting coming up, but what else, as a council, are we willing to give, accept, to move forward with this?
Well, we, we have a pretty good idea with the developer that we talked to, if, if this is where we're gonna go, I'm pretty sure that we're gonna be looking at the same thing. We're after, gonna give them everything but our staff, you know, to get this done.
But, but I think we have to talk about that. Because.
I mean, to make it workable, we're probably gonna have to.
Right, but there's also some things, I mean, we can't give away the farm either.
Right.
No, that's, that's true, it just depends upon how bad we want this, or do we want to be the developers? Which I think is a no-no. I don't think we have a chance.
No, I, myself, I, you know, I think RFP should go out again. I mean, we did, we were under a tight timeframe, but there are, I, I think we should put it out there again to see, and, and give more time.
I like that idea too of the RFP.
Well, and we did it at a bad time because it was rushed and it was right before the election. And it, it just, I do know we have some other interests, you know, my first question, why didn't you respond to the RFP? But some people just didn't have time, I think, to, to do it.
I think we should still pursue that avenue as we go. Uh, yeah, if we can, if we can make it work and not give them everything, that, that'd be great, but I'm afraid that.
My biggest thing is the whack and sack fees. I mean, I, I sit here, I don't think that's something that we should budge on because we do have a project that we have to pay for. Now, there's plenty of long-term with TIF financing and things like that, but that's one thing I think we shouldn't budge on at all. I, at least I'm not going to, I, I can't speak for everyone else, but with that, with housing, okay, now we have business too, okay? And sitting from a Planning Commission point of view, our ordinance when it comes to parking needs to look at, we need to look at that too. Our information from Sarah is there has been interest in downtown in some of our old buildings, but because of the ordinance on the way the parking is sitting, they, it hinders us. And I think that, in, in my view, should be number two, because.
Well, yeah, the, the problem seems to be with the housing, parking downtown. There's no place for the people to park, yeah. I kind of looked into this somewhat and, and Zoomer is definitely gonna, his tenant is leaving, but not because of that.
Right.
She has a health problem and she can't do the stairs, so she's, but there's something there that we have to work on. And, and I don't know if there's anything in the ordinance way back when that they appropriated housing or parking for these tenants?
So, they, the ordinance change was when I wasn't here and I'm not sure what drove it, maybe, maybe one of you remembers, but we have an ordinance in our zone, or a clause in our zoning that they have to have one off-site, off-street space for each unit of parking they have above grade. I don't recall that was in there, for, it's only been in there for the last maybe ten years. I don't know what drove it, I think, I talked to one planning member, I think Bill might have mentioned something at our last planning meeting and he said there was an issue about where people were parking and so that, that was a code amendment. I, I don't have a lot of detail as to why, but I know that's one concern with a couple of the recent sales. The question I've been, been asked is, do we have to have these off-site spaces? Because not all of them have a space like in an alley or behind their building.
Right. One, to the point of the TIF, you know, talking about TIF opportunities and redevelopment TIF districts, especially for our downtown area, will likely, or would likely entail some sort of mixed use where it'd be apartments above, retail below. And, you know, so those opportunities would come along with, well, where are they gonna park? Now, some of that could be, you know, you could do some underground parking, that could be factored into that and, and some space could be left for, for parking depending on, on the size of the lot. But nevertheless, the rest of downtown or those other buildings that are still in, we'll call it decent shape, that can have apartments above the current building, you know, do we have, are we making it realistic for maybe a developer or investor to want to purchase a building and go through the work of bringing it up to, you know, fixing it up, putting the money in, the investment into it to allow for them to be able to actually put somebody in the, you know, one or two apartments upstairs and be able to rent then the downstairs in, in a retail fashion? So, yeah, I would agree that the, some of our ordinances, especially as we are working towards the beautification of downtown, we're trying to get interest, we're trying to spark, you know, additional business. You know, what are we doing and what will we be able to work through from an ordinance standpoint to make it more, again, maybe modern or comparable to other cities as they all kind of face the same challenges we do? So we would agree then that, that that's part of a, a good topic in the conversation?
Yeah, I think that's very important.
And that we want to continue to explore that opportunity.
Yeah, where would you rate that on priority level? So we got like housing as like top. Is that like? I'm just trying to get an idea, so we kind of, just to.
From a, from a TIF dis, I mean, I, I, I maybe I'll, I'll step back, you know, from a TIF district standpoint and, you know, I'll say the redevelopment of, you know, downtown or, or beyond. You know, they'll maybe go a little hand in hand, you know, as we're talking about housing development and, and downtown revitalization or even, you know, business development in general. We have to be able to also discuss what, you know, high level, what are the ordinances and the, and the variances? I think we talked about that too with even something as simple as a breezeway. You know, does it really have to be that much, that much that goes into something as simple as that? And so I, maybe a little hand in hand? I, I, I feel like we'd be talking about it all at the same time.
Yeah, so maybe it's, it's just general code and regulations, like ordinance, zoning and code ordinances, like in general? So maybe we put those together, so development zoning ordinance and code of ordinance changes?
Right, and, and I mean, I don't know if TIF would fall into that category as well?
The TIF's not a code, that's a state statute. But I can put, I'll just put parking in parentheses here and maybe that will. So maybe that's kind of its own session, it's just regulation.
So with all that in mind, the industrial park, business and industrial, I mean, we have the land. There it goes, I think it goes hand in hand with the housing, what are we willing to do? And I think, first of all, some, we, we have to find a developer or entrepreneur that is willing to take that next step in their life. I, I think we definitely have the property and the opportunity for, to bring business in. But I ask everyone here, what, what are we willing to do?
And I think that's where TIF also can play a, a huge role. We know that if there were to be a letter of intent from a, you know, call it manufacturer, that that would allow for us to apply for grants to help with infrastructure. And I'm sure there's other opportunities out there as well, you know, and our, and our partnership with BEP is, is a good partnership to have with, with the opportunities that, that they can provide and, and offer. And so I, I think that's, you know, some of it just almost can almost naturally, as soon as we have that letter of intent. And then from there, you, there's like that, that underlying feeling of if you build it, you know, they will come. Right? And, you know, and so I, I, there's gonna be a lot of going on simultaneously, but TIF would be also another opportunity for that area, you know, or, or tax abatement.
Yep.
You know, is, would be the other option from an industrial park standpoint that we could leverage with regards to that.
Eric, can you just add to the grant that we've been wanting to apply for? We need a commit, committed like Mayor Voight said, that's also one that's subject to bonding bill funding.
Yeah.
So that's one of the other talking points that our state legislators have to be constantly hearing from us because they, that money runs out all the time. And so even if we have somebody committed, but the state doesn't pass a bonding bill for two years, that's not gonna help us very much. But we do, I think we have a really good opportunity there with that grant. And we've done that grant before at City and then Amanda has a lot of experience at BEP with that grant. So leveraging those, that network, I think, would be a very realistic, I think, possibility if there's funds available.
And we, and we own that land outright, or are we still paying on it?
We're still paying on that. So we purchased the first half, which we can just do the first half. We set it up for a certain way, so we could get a couple lots. But then we have an option on the second half.
When does that mature or expire?
Oh. It's a long time.
Okay. So nothing to, nothing to worry about now?
It's a long time, yeah. And I think what we always intended to do is pay the first five years and then just continue and exercise the option is, is kind of what we discussed as a council initially, so. It was just kind of splitting it up over that time period was our biggest concern.
So between grants, TIF, tax abatement, you know, again, we own the land, there's, I think there's opportunity for us to be able to delve in, just like, just like the south side perhaps, without having to, you know, forego sack and whack and some other things and, and find that commonality of how can we work to get some, an oppo, a good opportunity in, but without giving away the farm or, or, you know, the other comments? There has to be just that mindfulness of weighing the pros and cons, I suppose, and the return on investment as those opportunities present themselves? Good.
On the industrial park, Mark, do we, do we go ahead and start putting streets or whatever in?
That's the grant.
That's what the grant would do.
Whatever, prior to, hopefully to get somebody out there.
So we want the letter of intent first?
Or do we wait till after the fact?
I mean, you'd love to, but it's money.
Yeah, we need grant funding to, to board it.
That covers fifty percent, so.
Yeah, that letter of intent gives us fifty percent of what it would take to put that infrastructure in.
Do, do we do some of the processing in the construction of this before we have any?
Like the, like the design work and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, you know, the, I'm, I'm assuming we're responsible for surveying the lot.
So we did the, just the surveying to split it and we have a concept. I guess I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask the state, I'm not sure if you can do the design work or not. That would be a question, I'll check on that.
Right, if, if they'd allow for us to still apply for the grant if we did, so they'd basically in fact be paying us back in a sense, which I.
I mean, what I'm looking at, if somebody comes in and shows interest, I'd, I'd like to, just, I'd like to build there.
Yeah, I don't think.
And, and we don't have anything to even get them out there.
No, we have nothing, yeah.
You know, so how do we, how do we accommodate that?
Well, and the grant wouldn't pay for design, it's only for infrastructure. So it's possible we can just design it and wait. I'll check into that.
Design it, promote it, I suppose, maybe give more to BEP to a, to show or provide for possible candidates as far as design goes? Okay, good, good stuff. So we kind of tackled a lot there with the housing, industrial park, you know, zoning, planning, ordinances.
Old buildings, we kind of covered that a little bit too.
Yeah, I, I think that.
There's an opportunity.
TIF redevelopment districts would be a part of getting, maybe, some of these buildings are too far gone.
Right.
There's not enough, there wouldn't be any sense of putting in money to fix them or correct them. It would, it would be actually more economical to tear down and rebuild. You know, the facilities planning, you know, I think, I think we have to, you know, keep in mind we either start budgeting for the plan to be done or make a decision as to committing to doing it and then using that data to start budgeting down the road for any of these facilities that need to be put in place versus just continuing to kick them down the road.
Right.
What are we looking at, the water project, Mark, twenty-six, twenty-seven? The well and the purification?
We need funding.
Correct, correct.
We have some preliminary approval, if you will, or, you know, if, if you want to call it that, on, but bonding.
Well, we've already started that, haven't we, somewhat? Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's one that we have, we continue to keep kind of front of mind and, and I, and Sarah will help us with that and, and Mark. We know that that's definitely a priority that we have, we have to plan for and know that it, you know, we can work around it over the next couple of years, but it is inevitable that it has to happen.
Yeah, and I think the rate study and, and looking at that process will help us get a better handle too on how we would pay for that. But I, I do have some concerns because that priority list at the state for water and wastewater treatment keeps growing and growing and I mean, the number of needs on that list is mind-boggling. So I, I don't know how this is gonna.
That's largely, largely due to those, those state mandates.
State mandates, lack of bonding money, you know, fighting at the state, not agreeing on anything. So, you know, I think that's the other thing, we gotta try to keep moving forward, but I also think we're gonna have to recognize that it's kind of a tough situation right now too. I don't know what's gonna happen in the next couple of years.
Real, real quick so we can help Deb here, the one hundred and twenty-five year celebration was one of the?
I have just one suggestion. I would like to see us advise our sister city's mayor, Col, Colstrip, Montana. That was just one thought I had, being this is. That was just one thought I had being this is one hundred and twenty-fifth year. And they became our sister city on their hundred years. And it is where the Foley brothers made another portion of their fortune.
Well, and I would work with, with Anita on this, I just wanted to get your kind of thoughts too, so then we can kind of loop back to Anita um, and the civic group, cause I'm sure that once they know about this, we'll want to incorporate some stuff. I actually didn't even think of it until Hans came up to me at a meeting last week.
What, what are you gonna do to celebrate the quad-quantennial?
Yeah, it was like, oh wow, it is.
And I think you were gonna look back maybe to see what we did, uh, during the hundredth year?
We did fireworks.
Fireworks.
Yep. So, um, and then the other reason this was on here too is, um, there was a question on doing if the, at, at Fun Days, if there wanted to be like a council panel. And so, um, Sarah, the front desk, she's, it's just asked if I would just throw that out there if there'd be any interest in doing something. Kind of like an informal Q and A or some, I, I guess, I, I'm not sure exactly how it would all work, but just wanna know if there's any interest. Or maybe you guys want to do a skit or something, I don't know.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to doing something like that, it could be engaging, you know, community driven, fun, you know, again, very casual. Some questions prior. Could do something off of a playoff of a game, uh, idea. I, 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 I wouldn't be opposed to being a part of that, I, I, I'm sure we don't need all five of us, but you know, I would say if a few of us were willing to do it or more.
Okay.
I think that would, I think that would be, I mean, there's only two of us that probably would say, let's just scrap it, but.
So I'll just say maybe, you know, if there might be interest, then I'll have her.
I think we definitely need to stay ahead of as far as timing goes, uh, if we're gonna do anything as far as this, uh, celebration, we wanna start talking about it now, especially getting information to Anita and anything with, uh, full of Fun Days.
If we're gonna incorporate it with Fun Days, that comes up pretty fast, we don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have to be something that's put together. But I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good deal.
Well, we'll have Mark look into fireworks and. Who, who did the fireworks twenty-five years ago, I mean, like, is that like a company you hire or is that a public works thing?
They hired someone, shout them up at the park?
We can't just go to Wisconsin and get some? Just kidding.
We want the good ones.
I know a pyrotechnic, I know a pyrotechnic major. If you provide the fireworks, my husband will light them off for you.
You know, Sartell just, uh, did their, they do their celebration on New Year's Eve.
Yep.
At like their little, at their little lights and parade or what have you. Uh, I mean, maybe it's worth inquiring with them, who did they hire or what is, what was the cost, just to get some ideas of, you know, what that would look like, obviously hasn't been budgeted for, but something to at least entertain, you know, again, a hundred and twenty-five years is a, is a pretty big deal. Uh, good, and then, uh, Deb, you wanted to talk about, uh, the dog cat, stray animals agreement, shelter versus rescue, what to do?
I went to Rough Start and found out there is an impound in Malaca. Sarah reached out to them and they have not gotten back to us and I actually could tell you Rough Start did not think they would be real interested in it. It's an expensive process.
Yep, that's what we know.
Liability is high. So I don't know that we really have something that way. And we might have to try and negotiate with Tri County.
Well, we're probably gonna have to start budgeting something, you know, for the Humane Society over there.
I think we're talking about a thousand dollars more than we normally do is, is kind of a good starting point, which, you know, I know isn't a, a drop in the bucket per se, but I don't, I don't know how much time we spend on trying to reinvent the wheel here on a thousand dollars.
Well, and maybe that's, I, I, I can see what I can get from Tri County. I haven't been able to find anything else either. I mean, we can't go an hour and a half away, that's not gonna work. So, um, I can see where I get with her and, and then come back with a contract if we think that's what.
Yeah, I mean, if we need to.
It's not ideal, but I also don't want to fall on staff either, you know, to.
So, so with that, are we thinking that as a city then, that, um, our staff will be running stray cats and dogs over there or is this up to the people?
This is where people drop them off.
Okay.
But we just have to pay for it all versus them paying a participation.
Right.
And it, and the rates are going up, so that's just.
Well, I'm gonna need some information.
Um, I, I gave you a copy of the contract, okay.
Yeah, I read that.
I think, yeah, Sarah's next step was to see if there's any wiggle room or can we do better?
I was kinda hoping to get another contract.
Or it's, or it's figure out or decide what we're going to do if we're gonna say, nope, turn them away. And then what are we gonna do with the city with those animals?
Right.
And so, and again, so that's where I'm like, okay, again, a thousand dollars is gonna drop in the bucket, but how much time are we gonna invest and spend on, um, pretty much doubling our budget from a thousand to two thousand is kind of where we're.
If it stays, if it trends.
Now again, if it continues to trend up, you know, do we continue to work towards a, a different idea or checking with other cities, what are? We're not the only one of the problem cats, I'll tell you that, um, that's it is, you know, it's not just here, uh, so what do we, what do we do?
When you look at the list, there is nothing else there.
No.
I was, you know, when they said impound in Malaca. And she said, eh, don't go to them. You know, I mean.
Well, without, and they're gonna want money too. I mean, they're not gonna do it for free.
They're gonna want money. Rough Start, I don't know how they do their fostering, but if people called them, they would try to find a foster. But that can't be a done deal and they won't be cast. Because cast every time doesn't.
Right, and they're, and they're the problem, so.
I think we'll do the contract then, I'll, I'll see what I can get with the contract, and then we can also, uh, step up some of our education on social media just to try to get people to license, you know, um, try to get people to, you know, check with us if they do have, you know, just maybe there's some other things that might help.
Right.
Um, spread the word how important this issue is and keep track of your dogs.
And it's your tax dollars that are gonna be paying for your loose pets and everyone else's loose pets, so, you know, what can we do to maybe do a better job uh, as a community, um, versus just dropping things off, um, at the Humane Society.
And I think with my next conversation, then I, when I have to talk to the attorney about something, maybe I'll just, hey, anybody know, or we can put out feelers on other cities, anybody know of other options that maybe would help, like if there's an ordinance fine or something else that we could do?
Oh, sure.
You know, there's a couple of things, but it's kind of.
To, to get our money back, essentially.
So I'll look at that stuff.
Okay. All right, do we have to do anything to excuse Deb from the meeting or is she free to go?
She can go.
Free to go.
No, I don't know if you're excused yet.
I mean, I don't want you here. Uh, yeah, sure. Okay, so we, you know, so those are, I mean, obviously kind of like side items, I suppose, from a priority standpoint. Park and rec improvements, I think that was a big one, uh, we continue, or we have continued to budget money for park improvements. But we really haven't, we don't ever really discuss any, anything beyond that as far as what we're going to do and when we're going to do it and who's going to do it. I don't know what, what, from a priority standpoint, some, I, I feel that this might rank highly amongst our community. You know, time will tell, I suppose, but, you know, what, what are we gonna do with the budgeted dollars that we continue to budget for these projects that we're just still waiting to kind of do? I know we have the pickleball court resurfacing or tennis court resurfacing coming up.
Already done.
It's pretty much already in place. You know, we talked about some of the bad park equipments, we've talked about, we know people want our more trails and the trails connected is, is a big one.
I, I guess maybe the, what are the ideas and then how would you rank the ideas and then maybe, you know, once you have a order, then that's the order. Or when there's a money, you know, depending on the dollar amount, you go to the next item on the list, this is what we have.
Something like that, um, we do have good parks. We, we do have good trails, uh, Scout House rental, of course, that, uh, I think that's important. I, I guess what I, what I look at is a little future more than anything, and I'm looking at cannabis and liquor. I think a municipal in both would be able to fund some of this other things. If we're willing to do that. Now, I know in the past and Councilman Swanson, you'll agree with me that the city was in the booze business many years ago, but I think, um, I think times have changed and I think, uh, it's something that at least we could, um, look at pretty hard, because I think there's revenue out there that we could, um, get. We already have us, uh, sales tax from Benton County and they're building roads with it. Well, if something like that that we could get involved in, we could use that money.
I was thinking the same thing. I went online, I did a little research. The cities that have municipal liquor taken a butt kicking, both on and off sale. I don't know why. I see these private ones setting up all over, all over. But you go online and do some, I forget, it dropped like twenty-some percent from the last couple of years.
Well, is it from the heyday of COVID?
I'll say that would be expected out from COVID.
Cause like twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were like record years for municipal liquor, off sale.
Just liquor in general. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, pretty much. I, I guess they haven't asked like Stock Rapids lately, but they've always made good money on theirs, they've bought a lot of equipment and things.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think of going in the on sale.
Oh, I wouldn't either. I would strongly advise against on sale just to.
But both of them, uh, you, you go online and do some checking and I was, I was quite surprised that, uh, they, uh, they aren't making the money that I think probably should.
Stock Rapids in twenty twenty-three, uh, net profit was about eight hundred thousand dollars after operating.
I mean, I, I know it's more expensive to, you know, staff and obviously the new state regulations with employees and stuff are things that everybody's navigating. But I'd still think.
I mean, but if, you know, now eight hundred thousand on our, on a city our size is, was, is quite unlikely or, or unrealistic, but, you know, a hundred thousand here, a couple hundred thousand there, uh, can go a long ways, especially when it comes to, you know, funding upgrades or equipment or parks, trails, you know. There's a lot you could say about it, you know, and I think more to be done with it would be municipal liquor, municipal cannabis, you know, almost not obviously in the, in the same four walls, but somewhat attached in a way where it's like right there. Two birds with one stone.
You know, um, one thought I had is we're talking about we need to tend it out in the industrial park and I don't know if the city could qualify if we wanted to build the building out there to do our municipal cannabis and liquor, might be where it has to be because of the cannabis, cannabis regulations. You know, as far as the locations and such, but I don't know if that's something to explore.
Is there a daycare out in the industrial park?
Yes, there is, but the new industrial park is a little ways away. Is it five hundred feet? Would that be five hundred? Yeah, right? That's why it, cause there was, we're limited on where we could put something like that if we were to do that based on that code.
Yeah, I know that the idea of the cannabis doesn't necessarily sit well with everybody, but I do think that it's something you could tax the crap out of.
Well, and the other, I, the thought I always i- is if you're the city running it, I would strongly assume that we would, we would be running it according to the rules and, you know, take a good job with it because obviously there's liability with that too as well.
I think it's something to look at.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would.
I, I think it should be checked out, but I was just surprised at what.
I would say it's in my, in my top five from a, at least start researching and explore the opportunities and what that would look like.
Would you try and keep it in the city or out on the highway?
Uh, I mean, obviously the better location, 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 as they say. Um, it, it, you know, at the end of the day, you know, and again, to the point of the cannabis sales, you know, I, I'm not for it personally. But at the end of the day, it's going to be a moneymaker for someone, why not let it be a moneymaker for the city so we can reap the benefits before someone else can and we can.
Yeah.
And we can, we can leverage those dollars to help alleviate budget and alleviate, um, a lot, well, a lot of things.
Well, and the struggle with the cannabis right now is the state keeps getting setback after setback. Now they're looking for, not, I don't know if they hired the director, they just have the interim one. And there's just, not all the questions are answered yet. There are some cities though that are exploring it and have hired some companies to look into it. Um, and so there is some, there are some resources out there, um, but, you know, it's still, it's still fresh.
And it might be more like a, you know, this isn't gonna be something that will be done next year. It'd be something to just start researching, gathering data, information, keeping opportunities open for, you know, maybe buildings that may come up for sale that would fall within the appropriate distances, uh, and, and be ready to, you know, maybe move on an opportunity at least to acquire property if that was ever to be presented. So, but certainly maybe I'll call it a two to five year project, maybe a three to five year project.
You said like, list priorities, like it's top five?
I mean, it, from something that I want to at least explore, you know, now from a timing standpoint, it's definitely further down the road. Uh, but it's something that I'd like us to keep an eye on from a research standpoint, you know, again, collecting data, looking into some other cities. Cannabis, we know is down the road because again, the state's still trying to figure it out themselves, so we know there's no, no rush there. But I think opportunity for us to, again, earn revenue. It, it's a, it's a good, it's a good resource, if done correctly.
Where, where did we end up on parks to kind of shift it? Did we have a list of stuff?
We didn't.
I think we kind of, we kind of pivoted to, to just point, you know, do we, you know, that's an opportunity to make some revenue to be able to put into parks and improvements. I mean, there's some things we have to do just to keep up, maintain. But I, I do feel that, that, I feel that this one will be a, from a community perspective, feedback priority, I think that one's gonna fall high on their list. But I guess to be determined or to, to be proven. So I, I, I think we at least have to keep a pulse on that one is, you know, it may not be large investments, it, it may be what do we need to get done or what? What, you know, there's some, again, we talked about at that budget meeting, there is some, some questionable equipment that could be removed, you know, and now it doesn't mean, maybe you don't replace it right away, but what do we do in the meantime?
Right. I think all in all, um, the, our parks do get used. And with that, um, something like that, uh, we should hear from the community that are they adequate right now? Do we need to improve? When would you like us to improve on it? Um, I would like to see them, I remember as a kid going down there all the time, there's always people there, I'd like to see that again someday. And, but with that, I think housing falls way before that. With the housing first, our parks will get used.
I, I think the biggest thing right now, Mark, is some, some equipment, uh, replacement. And that's, that's a big thing that's.
Definitely equipment replacement.
Yeah, it's, it's a liability thing and, and if, you know, if we're gonna have it, we should take care of it properly.
Do you think it needs to come down even if it took us a year to replace it?
Hold it, hold it to the back one.
That's, that's my feelings as the back one, but.
This is Holdridge, right?
Yeah, Holdri-.
Holdridge.
Holdridge, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that back playground does sketch to you?
Well, just, I'm just like, what is, if we can't, if it's like, is it better to take it down and then the next year comes the new, or whatever, I just if it can't all be done, what's the plan? Maybe we need to put that down.
Yeah, that might just be
Maybe.
to, to be further discussed, I suppose.
So just another topic.
You know, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, spring or, you know, what have you, Mark, Mark and staff go look at it and, and use your best judgment on if we can take it down sooner rather than later, even if. if we can take it down sooner rather than later, even if we have to wait a while to, to replace it, maybe that's the best course of action. From a housing development standpoint, when we're talking about attracting people to our community, part of those, you know, the park rec stuff is a, is a part of making those decisions, right? Schools, parks, you know, safety, all the things. Um, so they, again, a little, a little bit of hand in hand there. I think that will be a, a good, I think that'll be a, a big priority for the people, but we'll see. Okay, so we talked, we talked a great deal about, I think, most of the front.
Yeah, so I don't have anything for like broadcast live meetings, engage live. Um, so like our equipment, mics and stuff have been ordered, but it just takes a long time to get those. Um, I think that's a, that needs to be in place before we try to do the next step. My only concern with the, the live broadcast is you gotta have people to run it. And um, I'm not sure how exactly that would work, so I might need to do some research with staff on that to see what we could do. Our staff will come to meetings. I just don't know consistently where, you know, how that's all gonna.
Right, if you're gonna do it, it's gotta be done consistently and right every time, not, not uh back and forth. Uh, so yeah, I think there's opportunity for us to, to evolve in that way. And, and exper- uh, explore those opportunities and options. Again, like you said, research, you know, what are other you know, cities doing, uh, you know, and the ones that are doing it, are they, you know, large cities or are they comparable or comparable in size uh to us? Because I think those are, those are important factors.
I, I have uh one thing that I neglected to put on the list, but uh how do we feel about um Benton County building in, in the city, uh, the, their facility? I think we should be supporting that wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I, I, it will. It will absolutely benefit our city.
They're looking at that lot right across the street currently, that empty school lot?
Yes, yeah. They own it. Their plan is to build on it. I have been out in the public and I think there, there's gonna be some opposition. There is opposition from some people and some commissioners on it, but I think it will be an asset for our city.
Yeah, I, I, I personally, I feel it's gonna happen one way or the other, whether it's this year or five years from now, is a moot point. I would certainly rather than build it here though than in Stock Rapids.
Oh, it has to be here.
You know.
Oh, yeah, it, it's different.
It doesn't have to be, but we want it here.
Just to update, they are working on, they're, they just scheduled some committee of the holes or they're in progress um, to kick off their community meetings. They're gonna do some tours and engagement sessions just to try to get some feedback from the public and try to talk to those people that have concerns about that and, you know, are opposed to it and why. So I would definitely keep your ears perked for that because I know they were just discussing that at their board meeting.
Right, I mean, and they're, and they're, I think they're doing it the right way. They're taking their time, they're doing engagements, they're, you know, because it is a big investment, it's a, it's a big, very big purchase. And so rightfully so, but yes, it will, it will only add to the uh, uh, positive economic impact for our area, um, along with everything else that we're doing.
I think the biggest, the biggest public concern was no tax base. I think that was the big thing, you know.
But it is also um to do that facility, they're really pushing towards in-person work. Um, and getting their staff back onsite, which could benefit like our downtown
Hundreds of jobs, hundreds of people in our downtown, in our area.
Yeah, um, so I mean, that's, um, I think, yeah, that, that's very interesting to me, but they have kind of gone through that process and I know that is kind of their vision, which is why this building is so important.
I have an add-on concern that just came to my attention last few days and a lot of people have been talking about it. And that's a stopping at the post office. They would like to see a four-way stop there tomorrow.
I know that one.
It is really getting bad.
The same people, yeah.
Is that a, is that a big thing that we have to go through?
The county road, county stated roads. I just talked to Commissioner Johnson about it. He was actually in a meeting when somebody brought it up too. Um, I think what we determined is that Chris Burden, the county, have the authority.
It was a godsend that the building's down on the other side of the street. That helps a lot. But with that post office and the parking there, you don't see a car coming up that hill. It's, it's pretty bad.
Either direction.
Yeah, yes. And a lot of people, uh, you know, they were pretty happy with it when we had the detour, four-way stop. And uh, they said they'd like to see it back.
So would we say, uh, well, I mean, Chief McMillan, do we, do you see you and your officers there responding to a lot of accidents? Just curious, I guess, as to how, you know, what, what are we talking about here as far as how bad it is?
There has not been accidents there. Well, I shouldn't say hasn't been, and I can think of for sure two off the top of my head. Um, so there hasn't been many, um, but and we do get complaints of people running that stop sign too, but the thing is we go, we park there, then they stop because they see us there. So, um, and I mean, and there's times too, like you said, when you're coming up that hill, it's hard to tell if they stopped back at the stop sign because all the cars so, and I don't stop people unless I know for sure a hundred percent that they didn't stop. Because if I stop them, then and write them a ticket and then they take it to court, well, Chief McMillan, are you a hundred percent sure? I have to be a hundred percent sure, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can put feelers out, uh, again, with the county to see if they, I can't remember if there was a reason. I don't, I don't remember the exact, this has been brought up. We can, we can check on it.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that seems like an easy, an easy thing to
That's not, yeah.
To, to look into.
At least get an answer for you or what the official answer is.
You know, is there anything else to, as far as adding to the list?
Uh, I, I have a question about fire. As we grow, Mark, what's the fire department gonna need? New building, bigger building? We certainly wanna stay away from a ladder truck. We know that.
Some apartments will be getting a used one. I mean, our ISO will force that.
You're, you're what?
If we have to do some apartments, we'll end up getting something, you know, eventually.
But that's
Will I see it? No, but the, the day is coming, yeah, if we keep getting apartments.
That's four-story, five-story?
Even a three, I mean, threes, to take somebody down a ladder on a three is you know, pretty hard.
And that's part, and that's again, a part of that city facilities planning, you know, that'll be some information that would be beneficial to know, what, what do we need to expect from a growth standpoint? What does that look like for our facilities? And from a staffing standpoint, building size, et cetera. And how do we start budgeting for that now before too much time goes past and, and now we're scrambling?
Well.
Can I just ask a question, like conceptually, is the council on board with Public Works going down to the gray storage? And like City Hall and police staying here? I mean, is that kind of the consensus?
I think that would work. I would want the, the admin, the state uptown. You know, uh, as far as the public works, I don't see that a problem.
Because then, you know, part of that discussion, if Public Works goes, there's a vacant lot, does that become police then? Or do we, you know, i- i- that's just kind of big picture things, just sometimes two opportunities come up too as well, like something might come for sale or something, you know, and that's where I think it's important to really think about what the facilities plan is a part of it too, but I just, we wanna make sure we kinda have some ideas in hand, in mind too. But I know that's with all the buildings that have come up, like over, I've always kind of kept that in the back of my mind, like if something comes up, you know, we might wanna look at that sooner than later.
What, what is the justification or what can we do on some of these vacant resident homes? That are just standing there and deteriorating?
That are vacant and for sale or just?
Well, if they're not being sold, I mean, some are, they've been sitting there so long, they're not sellable anymore. That's what's happening.
For the, uh, for uh, commercial real estate or how, or residential?
Housing, housing.
We have some houses, yeah. We don't have an ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
That's not occupied. Our ordinance is that you mow the grass, you know, you don't, you shovel your snow, that kind of stuff. I don't know if there's such a thing as an ordinance for unoccupied. Yeah, and they're paying taxes, they're
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of, I guess, you know, you have the, the snowbirds that do it, like they, they don't, they're for six months out of the year sometimes and.
I mean, I, I just think about, I mean, proximity is probably a, a big part of it, but you know, Stock Rapids has bought I think three houses in the last two years and demoed them and, and created commercial real estate lots. Um, you know, one's being built right now, uh, just down Benton, and then they just bought some, another house and they're planning, I think that's when they relocate the house. But the city bought it and, and then they're going to have an additional commercial real estate space for their growing downtown.
But I think before we do something like that, we should look at downtown.
Well, right, yeah. Yeah, we, with, again, Stock Rapids has been working on their redevelopment of downtown for the better part of twenty years. And, and still working on, on plans and projects that they've, that they've put in place many years ago. That, that's kind of where this, where this discussion, I hope, stems to becoming a, a resource or an opportunity for us to stay in front of what does five years, ten years, twenty years look like? And what things are we putting in place in order for us to, to hit those, those markers uh as we continue to grow? And prioritize the right way, uh, so we're not surprised by things that we didn't budget for or at least start planning for.
I think it, you hit it though, Mr. Mayor, as far as budgeting. I mean, in order for us to even be able to do this, we have to budget for it first.
So maybe that's something we wanna add for our budget discussions, maybe start budgeting for or budget for a city facilities plan as we continue to look at the growth of our city. Right, yeah.
So housing is like number one is kind of what I heard from facilities plan, is that high up for you guys or is that, where's that rank?
I, I think it's something we have to at least, I mean, I understand it's not budgeted this year, but we do need to, to talk about budgeting for so it can be done.
I mean, and that's, well, that's more attainable than the actual facility.
I had it as a top five anyway.
Yeah, I mean, i- it, we, we were truly are concerned about our facilities, I mean, we need to, we have something in place to make, you know, to accomplish those goals. Um, what else do I have? Housing, budgeting for facility plans, um, what would you think is the next? You know, I just, it would be nice to kind of.
Industrial slash downtown. I mean, I think just the your business, business in general. Uh, the, we got well, well and water, uh, is something we have to keep a, an eye on.
Uh, water treatment, sorry. Well, number six, okay. So housing, budgeting for facilities plan, industrial downtown, water treatment, well number six.
I mean, I would throw up there park and rec. I, I mean, for me, I, I think the cannabis, you, the municipal businesses are, are up there as well, but I think that's just more of a um, you know, something we need to, to start looking into and, and researching and, and have opportunities to continue to discuss as time goes on. But I wouldn't say it's something that I'm looking to plan and, and break ground on or something in the next
These are, we want to accomplish these first before we get into the nitty gritty of that, okay? So park and rec, we're just saying just improvements? Priority levels or some?
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to see, you know, again, also feedback from the community, you know, do they, do they, you know, do we have a resounding, you know, amount of people suggesting they want more trails or trails connected? Okay.
So, would you say that, um, it might be helpful if we were to do some type of engagement to kind of list things and have people rank?
I think like a survey or poll of some sort to see what they would like, or what our community would like to see in our parks. I know that the one that's come up in our neighborhood is a dog park, but
Oh, yeah, that's come up a number of times.
That's on one of the options.
I think I have it on there, don't I? Yeah, that's come up a, a few times here.
Yeah, I think a, a poll or, or survey of some sort is, is a good start. I wouldn't be opposed to having just a community engagement session of some sort. Maybe it's not as formal as the, you know, council chambers, maybe it's spring when it's a little warmer and we do it at Lions Park or something, I mean, I don't know, and just have you know, what, what could we, what fun, what entertainment or what fun thing could we do to, to get people to join us, right? You, you do the, uh, the, the bike, the bike rodeo, right? That brings a lot of our community together. You know, what, what kind of other fun thing could we do as a, as a city to engage our community, get them to come down? Maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's hot dogs, right, or whatever. May, maybe it's, maybe it's chief in a dunk tank, I don't know.
I think the Fire Chief Envy is chief in a dunk tank.
Chiefs, it's chiefs in a dunk tank or pie, pie eating contest, I don't know. Something, just something engaging to, to bring, a, a reason to bring people down and get something for the kids to do and, and be able to, uh, have all of us there to engage with the community and hear their ideas and priorities. Um, concerns, right, general comments. Um, I, I feel that that would be a, a, a great thing for our, for our folks to be able to at least, you know, you can't always get everybody. Um, and, and there's always gonna be a date and time conflict with others, but, you know, it's the thought that counts. And I'd be willing to be a part of that and help plan for something like that to see what we could do to, um, to put on something nice for the, for the area um, to come and provide feedback.
I just thought of another one, Mr. Mayor, and it's something that's gonna be coming up sometime soon is Lions Park Pond.
Yeah, that's a
That probably should be higher on the list.
That might be, uh, right up there with the I Y, the water treatment.
It might even be.
Might be even.
It might even be higher, but
We have to wait for our, what M C.
Our plan to be approved.
Yeah, to be approved and such, and then we have to kind of go from there with what the options are. But that may be, that may be a good thing though to, to get feedback from community though. What, what would you like to see with that? Knowing that it's not something that would happen overnight, but what, what could that be or look like um for future development? From a, from a park and rec standpoint?
So I just, we didn't really vision long-term goals of the different departments. You know, we kind of asked them as residents, but then like other items, I'm kind of just generalist. Staffing, equipment, space, like is there other items that I'm missing? That other departments, you know, beyond those general items in the facility plan are needing. Those are kind of things we talk about, but I don't know if there's other. Maybe technology? Cause sometimes we have trouble with like our connections, like Public Works and City Hall Building. We, we have just a headache sometimes with trying to communicate because of all of our records and stuff, so maybe I'll put technology on there. Okay, I just wanted to I think we got a really good start here.
That, I, I mean, again, some of the stuff really does go hand in hand. I mean, as you're talking about facilities planning, you're talking about growth of the community. Naturally, there's gonna be a growth or a need for our departments, um, staffing, equipment, et cetera. All things we need to think about, prioritize, budget for, continue to, continue to, to discuss these topics. And, you know, and Sarah will lean, lean on you to help remind us of some of these things and when should we start, you know. Right, it's like budgeting, we, we talk about it, we, we have our feelings about it, but then, then it just kind of until something comes up again or until someone mentions it, we, we don't, we don't speak on it or we don't remember to speak on it. I, I think it's important that we keep these things in front of us as a reminder to, um, and hold ourselves accountable to continue to talk and engage some of these topics.
Um, I think though what I heard is housing is like one of the tops and top priorities. So is this something though we want? Um, I think, though, what I heard is housing is like one of the tops and top priorities, so is this something, though, we wanna continue, you know, we need to, we need to work on that issue and probably just designate time for just that issue, um, is that something we wanna do, like put on the next council agenda for workshop afterwards, or, um, I guess, what's the next step with this?
I, I think the first step would be figuring out the RFP.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we probably have to officially or, or, uh, reject, I guess, uh, uh, you know, would be the term, the, the one proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and then we'd have to wordsmith the RFP a little bit, because now it, it, we already, we're already purchasing, uh, pipes and such, so that's gonna be a little bit different, uh, verbiage, um...
I, I'd like to see it simplified if we could, um, I think that was one of the things that hurt us is it just got a little bit too in-depth, yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, it's maybe something we can le- again, leverage neighboring communities and, and that have recently put one out to see if we can make it more simple.
Well, and I think... I think, um, I don't wanna say delicately, you know, sometimes when you get, like, uh, the attorney, love our attorney, but then it's just like this and this, and, and it just got so detailed. And I just wonder if we turned people away from that, like, if they just didn't wanna deal with all of that.
Sure.
So maybe we need to have a discussion at the council level with the attorney, um, and, you know, like Amanda from B E P, and maybe what can we do to make this a little more attractive for people to respond to?
Like we did with our downtown facade application.
Yes, it's simple.
Pretty simple, straightforward.
Yep. It's been very successful. Some people are turned off, and I am, I'm the same way. Sometimes you open up a grant application, you're like, oh, for Pete's sakes, like, why am I gonna fill out twenty pages of paperwork for two thousand dollars, you know?
Yeah, right.
You know, it, it just, sometimes that's the case, it just gets a little too much, and we hear that from, we even heard that from our business visits. People were like, well, I don't even apply for that program because it's a state program and the hoops you have to jump through are just too much.
Yeah, yeah, not worth, not worth the investment of time.
Um, maybe that's the, like, so maybe we should put it on for a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we need to move forward with what we're gonna do with Southside.
Yeah.
I think the first step would be rejecting the RFP, and then what do we do about the next RFP, and what does that look like in timeframe?
Okay, so I can put that on the agenda then, the first action item, okay. Anything else, or we haven't?
Well, I think that's...
Do we have a ground for today?
I think, I think we, I think we, uh, I think we did ourselves, uh, uh, we did, we did our part in, in at least throwing things out there and, and having some discussion.
And maybe I'll just keep this kind of available and just here, and we can keep, if we come up with something, we can kinda keep adding and... Okay. Do you guys have anything else, or no?
What, what you got? Wha- what is?
Oh, I'll get to that, that's part of my presentation, if you wanna do it tonight, is everybody like...
Bring it.
E- and what, what is, just from a timing standpoint, what is this one, from?
This is just, just training, and I can just go over like the maybe most important parts, if that's what you would prefer, you have the slides there.
I mean, you've heard it, I, I've heard it, you've heard it, I don't wanna short, I don't wanna shortchange you.
I can, if we wanna hit the important stuff, I can read through the rest of them by myself, and then when I come to hang out at City Hall one day.
I'm happy to sit down with you too, if that's easier, yeah.
Absolutely.
I just think it, we just try to do this with any, every two years, just to make sure...
It's a good refresher, I mean, no doubt.
Yeah, yeah. No, we can just hit the strong points tonight, and then I can read through this and sit down with you when it's more convenient.
Okay, are we good then? Wanna keep going?
Yep, I, let's move to Sarah on the, on the, uh, council training.
Okay, so these are just some fun signs that everybody loves. Um, high item for a statutory A city, um, so we follow the state statutes. Um, you guys delegate authority to me to run the day-to-day, you guys are the main decision-makers, you have hiring and firing authority. It's most important for you to read and prepare for council meetings, your packets, we provide that all ahead of time, and really devote your time to basic policy and act as liaisons between the public and, um, the city staff as a whole. Um, so I can, what, really what I focus on is just high level, like, you guys are the, you set the big umbrella and the rules and the goals, and then staff implements it. As you know, we do a, a number of things, elections, um, rules, legislating, ordinances, budget, taxes, that, all sorts of things. Is this okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Um, and like I had mentioned, you guys, um, make all the decisions, really the big ones, um, and you just delegate staff to, to carry all those decisions, but the, you know, anything significant, we're gonna come to you, that's why you see stuff through, through the consent agenda all the time, um, cause technically we have advising, you know, we advise you or give you recommendations, but it's ultimately your authority that determines. These are just the committees we have, planning, E D A, we have personnel, we do do others, like ad hoc as needed, you know, so if you have an issue, we just wanna put somebody on cannabis, we'll do that. Um, so that can always change, and you make recommendations when you're on the committee. Uh, mayor, it's a, we have a weak mayor system, so mayor is like a council member, has very limited authority, um, for like making decisions on his own, but his, he is the official head of, uh, the city and is signer on our documents, um, bank accounts. Um, very limited and tiebreaker, um, the best example I can have is if we had, um, a council member resign and two to two, we could not decide on an appointment, just exhausted all efforts, the mayor could, could break that tie. But you must exhaust, like thoroughly exhaust all their options. Um, the mayor also would call like an emergency. So, uh, we had a tornado, um, high winds a number of years ago, mayor had to call an emergency. We had COVID, mayor had to call an emergency, you know? Um, until the council can convene as a whole, the mayor can do that. Um, you have a city clerk and treasurer, I am your city clerk and treasurer, um, I delegate some duties to deputy clerk, um, you know, so to staff members, but ultimately I am the statutory officer of the city. Um, some cities that are bigger have a separate city administrator, clerk, and treasurer, we are all one. Um, city council hire, fire, set salary, we talked about that, here's our organizational chart, um, so city council and the city admin, I report directly to the city council, um, and then you can see who we supervise, um, fire chief, public works, police chief, they can report directly to you, and then also a secondary reporting relationship to me or the city administrator, whoever that is at that time. Uh, you guys know the different positions, we do have titles, but, um, communications, I just wanted you to have a copy of, um, we do have a communications plan, and, uh, I think it's important to recognize that, like, we do have things that happen. These were some of our really exciting moments in city history that, um, some of us got the pleasure of dealing with, um, but it's important to understand that we do have things that happen, we're gonna have to present, you know, information to the public, we have to be very mindful of how we communicate, and a lot of these things are kinda outlined in here, who we go to, who's the acting communicator, typically the mayor, um, or myself, or if it's like a fire or, you know, police matter, it would be, you know, the chief of police or chief of fire, um, but just, just so you know, we do have, um, some plans in place when that does occur. That's the boil order, if you guys remember that one. So, yeah, just key messages, um, I always encourage you, if you don't know how to, you know, respond, or what the best thing to say, reach out. Um, if we don't have the answer, we also have some other resources, like the league, um, who, you know, can help us with, with those messages as well. Um, finances, um, just kinda important to recognize, there's different funds, um, and how the city is organized, and you have limitations on what these funds are. So, like special revenue funds, pool of fire, um, those are because they do generate some significant source of revenue or income. Um, debt service, that's like our bonds, um, we'll issue another debt service with our street project next, this coming year, or this year, I should say. Um, capital project funds, you know, that's where we buy some of our equipment and other things, um, proprietary funds, um, those are the water and sewer. So, the enterprise funds of those have to be self-sustaining, so that is why we raise water and sewer rates to cover those charges, because we can't levy taxes for those charges. We have to pay for those out of those service fees. And then fiduciary funds, those are just pension, um, you recall, um, some of you that have seen the audit reports, we often have to disclose that para liability. Um, that's kind of a new thing that's happened the last few years, so we're responsible for funding or reporting, uh, that obligation on our, our financials, um, for the pension, the state pension that we're all in, the city employees, and some council members are in it too sometimes, um, on our records. Um, we do the budget in the summer, and usually how that goes is we prepare a draft, um, and then we bring it to the council with some ideas, and then we have, uh, usually a really workshop session where we just kinda talk through things, we like this, we don't like this, um, wanna add this, so forth. Um, and it will have extra meetings if we need to, um, but then ultimately you, um, you certify a preliminary levy, um, in September, and then, um, in December, you'll certify your final levy. And some years it's very straightforward and easy, and some years it's, uh, difficult, and it just depends on where we're at. Um, borrowing, so we'll be going through this process, um, with issuing debt this year for our twenty twenty-five improvements, um, but this just kinda shows you, we do have some, um, different bonding sources. Um, typically what we do is general obligation or special assessment bonds, um, but there are some other options, revenue bonds, those are like for your, uh, water sewer funds for improvements, you can just, um, designate revenue, um, refunding, uh, that's refinancing some bonds in essence. Um, street reconstruction, that's, uh, basically a process where you make a five-year street improvement plan, and you can then bond based on that plan. It is subject to reverse referendum, we don't typically do it because we charge, um, a special assessment when we do our big projects, we charge the property owners a portion back. Um, but it's an option, some cities do, like Becker does a lot of it, they do, uh, street reconstruction, because they don't charge necessarily their taxpayers for a portion. And then conduit is when somebody actually uses the city credit, like a private business will use the city credit, um, to finance, like, um, nursing homes done it before. Doesn't affect us at all, they, they, basically, it's just a unique program through state statute that they can use our credit to, to finance their project. And general obligation, if I skipped over it, essentially means we, we issue that debt on the backs of the taxpayers. So, we will levy taxes necessary to repay that debt, um, so that's what the city is committing to as a whole. So even if something were to happen and the, you know, something catastrophic in the project, we still have to pay that debt back with the taxpayer dollars. I'm not gonna go through all the political straight talk, um, you can read through these, just some suggestions. Um, we did the annual meeting where we, we did all of our appointments, I think that's pretty straightforward, a meeting schedule. Um, special meeting, um, something to keep in mind, uh, three days' notice, so when we call a special meeting, you'll see that posted out in the entryway and on, on the TV screen. Um, essentially, we have to give notice of that meeting, um, and so if mayor comes, Sarah, I need to call a meeting tomorrow, if it doesn't meet the emergency meeting requirement, we can't call it, it's gotta be three days.
And with that, Sarah, by posting it outside and on the TV, that's legal, it does not have to go into a newspaper, correct?
Correct, yep. Nope, our general, our official place of posting is at City Hall, so... Um, okay, remote attendance, um, one thing I wanna mention to you about this, they did do some changes with this, um, with COVID, they allowed more remote attendance. Um, the things that I remember, if you have an obligation and you can't be here in person, reach out to me, we can have you attend remotely. Um, you just can't do it all the time, um, and when we do remote attendance, you'll notice, we've done a couple of them, we do roll call vote. Um, and then now the new law is you have to identify the location you're at. Um, so Brandon's traveling for work, and he's in Minneapolis, you know, at, at a hotel, he could say, I'm at the Marriott and whatever, this is the address, because it's technically supposed to be open to the public. Now, there are some exceptions, if you have a medical, you know, condition or something like that. Most people, it's not an issue, but, um, you can't do it all the time, I think you're limited, it's either two or three times, I, I think it was done.
I think it's three.
Three?
Yep.
Um, but if you do, and somebody always has to be here in person too, there's, there's some other requirements that we'd make sure we make, but if you do have a conflict and can't attend a meeting but could attend remotely, let me know, cause especially if we're gonna do more of the technology, we'd rather have you there and listening and participating than not at all, and I think it's a good, a good option. Um, I won't even go through this if you wanna, there's, when, the cat video, have you ever heard of the lawyer that attended the remote hearing and could get the cat filter off his camera? It's just a funny video if you ever wanna do it. Um, quorum, has, has anybody heard about quorum lately? What is quorum? We need, in our situation, a five council members, we need three, that's quorum. Um, and then this talks about open meeting laws, um, I think the attorney talked about this last time too. Um, high levels, you can't be all together conducting business, um, it's a small town, though, and the attorney will tell you, well, you know, you're gonna end up at church together or something might happen, be mindful of that. We don't wanna be discussing city business, try to, you know, separate yourself, but obviously there are gonna be situations where sometimes you can have three people in the same room, or at the same event. Um, but you should not be discussing or making any, um, on city business, essentially, and then do not reply all to emails. Do not reply all to emails. If you want something communicated to the entire council, the great thing about that is you have me and your other department heads. We can communicate with the council, so Stephanie can say, hey, Sarah, I just wanted to, like, make sure everybody gets this. I can just then, thanks Stephanie, and then I'll send an email out to everybody, here's all your information. Yeah, so just always know you have us as your, as your conduit. And you don't need the mayor necessarily here to, to have a quorum of three, we have an acting mayor for a reason. I think we talked about the main. Okay, preserving order, the mayor is, this is the one thing the mayor does get to do, is he gets to control the meetings, he's in charge. Um, so, um, you, as a mayor, also have the authority to, um, control a discussion, you can stop discussion, you know, like, at some point, if something's not, um, if we're not getting where it's getting to, um, rowdy, whatever, you could always call a recess, take a break, I mean, that's, the mayor's job is to make sure we run an orderly meeting. Um, it's always encouraged that you follow the agenda, um, and that, uh, we stick to the topics of the agenda, um, we don't allow interjection um, during the discussion, there's usually a part of the meeting where we allow that. When everybody, um, anybody is, is addressed or allowed to speak, they should be at the podium, they should be stating their names, it's really important to, to maintain order. When you don't maintain order, um, if we would've had a video of some of the meetings we had a number of years ago, I mean, Jeff, I think, was at some of them, it, it can be chaos, so it's, that's why it's always very important to run a tight meeting, keep it order, keep to the agenda. Any attorney will tell you, that's just the safest way to go. Um, okay, public comment, uh, you do not have to allow for public comment, it is not a requirement. I don't recommend you don't allow for it, I mean, I think it's important to engage the public, but, um, this is the, the slide from actually the attorney. Open forum is not required, but it should be managed, limiting time and topic, um, advance written notice, some cities require you to turn in your open forum before the meeting agenda is even sent out.
Do we need, do we need two open forums?
No, you're not required to do them at all.
Right.
And sometimes, um, I've been in meetings and the, it's gotten so long, and the mayor might just say, we're not gonna do open forum this time. We've been here for three and a half hours, everybody's exhausted, it's, you know, we will open it up again at the next meeting and give the public a time, you know, that's happened too. And then the recommendation is, uh, not responding, um, to comments at open forum, um, refer to staff, or, you know, we'll get back to you. Um, and that's just generally just to protect yourself, to make sure you have all the information, um, and we get the, the best response, the, the correct response back to whoever asked the question. Um, any questions on that? Um, just kinda ordinances, resolutions, motions, motions are the most informal, yep, we're approving the agenda, yep, go ahead and buy this computer, whatever it is, um, resolutions are kinda more formal actions, so we'll do that on, um... Resolutions are kind of more formal actions, so we'll do that on variance requests. Because that's like a statutory, sticks with the property. You know, you'll, you'll see the gambling licenses, we have to do resolutions because the state wants to see that more formal action item. And ordinances like the laws, the local laws of the city. So whether it's zoning, whether it's dogs. Conflict of interest. Gifts are prohibited and I believe the statute is still five dollars. I don't think it has ever moved in my time. Now, there'll be things like, you know, treats or something, that's always the one that always comes up. Somebody brings treats to you guys at the meeting. Best way to handle that is just set it down and open it up for everybody else, you know. There are things that you're going to get stuck with sometimes and, and we have to work through that, but you really should not be accepting gifts of a value over the five dollar mark. Contracts, we have some limitations where you have to disclose, you know, if you're a part of a contract or you have a conflict of interest, it kind of all rolls into that. That's where you reach out.
I think you saw me disclosing if I'm doing some work for the city, something like that, so.
And if you ever have a question about if you can or cannot vote on something, that's where you, you come and ask me. I think I've used this example before, but we had a person that was being assessed on a project. And we needed a four fifths super majority to get the project through. But we had a vacancy at the time, so we only had four members and needed all the four members. Well, we could, that member voted for the project and essentially voted to assess themselves. So the attorney said that was fine. The conflict was actually, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't favoring him. It wasn't benefiting, it was actually probably, it was benefiting him, but it wasn't, you know, some, it was, it was the, the action that he actually charged himself money or whatever it was. It was fine, but those kind of hiccups we'll, we'll do some research and talk through. You know, making decisions, the council will not always agree on the final decisions. But it's important to be respectful of what the decision of the majority is, you know, and that's what makes a great council. Is you can express your opinions and at the end of the day, yeah, you may not agree, but you know what, that's the, the direction we're moving forward. And then, you know, you do what you can to support the direction of the city. Data practices. If you're in doubt, just ask me. Data practices is one of the most complicated things we deal with. But the biggest thing is personnel data is all protected, so be careful with personnel data. Any official data request, send to me. I will route it to Katie if needed. We get a lot of police reports and that stuff. You got to be careful with data practices. We also have like time limits when we respond, you know, and certain things like that. So always check with, with us. What's in the public packet and we post online, that's all public data. I will, like, just like I sent out my review form separately, that's not public data. So we will, anything that's posted online, we try to put everything that is public out there for everybody, the council packets, so everybody has them. And saves you that trouble of being asked for the information. Social media accounts, this is one thing that we just want you to be mindful of. If you use your personal social media account to respond, it must remain fully open to the public. So a lot of times if you want to get very active on social media, you might want to create a separate page that just handles your city accounts. Your emails, your phones could all be subject to data request. So that's one thing to be very mindful of. Your personal phone and you're texting, you know, Brandon and Mark are texting about public works, that could be subject to a data request. So just keep that in mind. You are, as elected officials, supposed to keep that information available. Planning and zoning. We have to have the zoning and planning commission in place. That's been in statute for years. And that's where we start all of our like variance, rezoning, subdivision, those type of requests. They're all filtered through the planning commission first before they come to you. And then state law does encourage a city to have a comp plan. We do have a comprehensive plan, it's a little dated. But if anyone is, does remember, we did do a land use plan very recently, which I think has been very helpful. But, you know, those items, you will see those items on the end. You might, you might hear about a request, but by the time it reaches the city council level, usually planning has, staff's gone through it, planning has gone through it. And we have that commission to help you with reviewing those applications. And that's like I said, variances, CUPs, site plans, annexations. It's advisory to the council. And like I said, they'll, they'll do a lot of the legwork. We have a couple of really good planning members. They've been around for a long time, so they'll do a lot of the legwork for you and really give you some good insight. And this is just kind of the development process. Which we're going to kind of go through if we do this housing and things. But when you do like housing developments, it gets a little more complicated. There's a lot more steps involved. It's not just plotting out lots, there's usually development agreements, there's, you know, escrow improvements. Who's putting in the improvements, who's inspecting them, you know, there's a lot of different variables. And then, you know, typically with that, you'll have a public hearing as well. But you'll see a lot of that as we come through the housing process. And then just on personnel, supervision and direction, I mean, your job is to give us that direction so that we know what we should be doing. Exempt versus non exempt. You have, myself, Mark and Katie are all exempt. All of our other employees are non exempt. We do comp time here. You've probably heard of that. That's a very unique thing with public employ, well, it's not unique, but it's very common in public sector employment. So you will have comp banks and we are, you know, our police officers, our public works, all of them, when they push no, when they do different things, they're earning comp time for it. Union versus non union. The only union we have is the non exempt police officers, full-time police officers. We don't have any part-time, correct? Other things, you know, we have FMLA. Now we'll have paid family leave, earn sick and safe time. We also do a veteran's preference and military leave. One thing I'll say about the union, there was a lot of new legislation with unions this last year. So we have like more obligations with giving them meeting space to meet with employees. Some of the reporting we have to do. A lot of people didn't realize that, but there was a lot of new union changes that basically more things for the employers are that we're obligated to do with the unions. Fortunately, we have a really good union. They're really good to work with and it's been no issues because they're reasonable about things. Cause you know, there was just a lot of stuff that came down. Alright, if you have any other questions, I strongly encourage you to check out the League of Minnesota Cities. They have fabulous resources there. And you can put anything in their search bar and there'll probably be, you know, at least a dozen things that'll pop up. Do you guys all get the league bulletins? I think we signed everybody up for that, like one just came out today. Stephanie, you should check on that. Yeah. Sarah was working on the list of updating you in their system, but their little updates are great. They, I think they're well-written. We're talking layman's terms, or like, they, they try to simplify and make it easy for you to understand. And it always is a good way to keep, you know, a pulse on what's going on at maybe the state level too. Mayor's handbook's a really good resource. I think I sent that out before. And then you should also be starting to get like league magazines too, which will have little tidbits and information. Do you guys read those usually?
There's good articles, you know.
Yeah, and they're shorter and not, you know, they're little bits and stuff. I know Brandon's going to do some training coming up here. Do not hesitate to let me know if there is a training you want to do.
Well, the, the, no, the.
Experienced one, right?
The experienced one with the league, that's with the league, right?
There also is some online options I could, did I send those to you yet or not?
I don't think so. I think it just have the in-person ones.
Okay, I can do that. But if there's something you're just not sure of, like, oh, I just, do you have anything on zoning or whatever it is? Let me know because there's some, we, there's a lot of little virtual trainings too that we can get access to. And it might just be sitting down for thirty, forty-five minutes and you can just get an update, so. Any other questions? I know I kind of, I hope it wasn't too long.
Stephanie, have you been bombarded with the junk coming through yet, junk mail?
Nope.
You will.
I feel like my junk filter is doing a really good job.
Can't wait to check my spam folder.
Well, it's just stuff that comes through. A lot of it I consider junk, but some of it there's, you just have to watch it.
Yeah, so I, and if there's something, yeah, let me know if you want to chat or some, you know, we can go through more detail. And if I can't answer your question, you know, I can, I can get you the answer.
You're pretty resourceful, I believe you.
We've done this a few times though. The, the attorney and I kind of came up with this presentation a while. We just kind of keep tweaking it and updating it, so. That's all I have unless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Well done.
Yeah, move on to old business if, if there is any, there's nothing noted, doesn't anyone have anything? Okay, new business, setting up the next workshop discussion topic for February fourth. That's, we've pretty much decided that right with, we're going to talk about the RFP and, and such.
And that'll be after the, after the prison.
After the meeting, yes. Yes.
It's kind of the, the meeting following the meeting, right? Okay. Great, any other new business? Mayor's comments and open forum. I would entertain, from a time standpoint, a short comment, if anyone has anything to step up to the podium, state your name and address. Take, take a couple of minutes and, and share.
Deborah Wilton, the tenement stewardess, you talked a lot about the parking. Again, since two thousand and eight, I will remind you, the cities have not followed state statutes in regards to parking. If you would like a copy, I'm sure our chief of police will fill you in. She's issued parking tickets by my end. That would help eliminate around the post office. We aren't supposed to park right up to those crosswalks and it happens all the time. I've seen near misses on my end. So maybe that's something you should look at. Yes, it's going to eliminate parking stalls, but it's still a safety factor.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Is Wilton coming in right away with some addition work or is that down the road? Yeah, on a family, family restaurant.
Oh, there, the addition is down the road, but.